Twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the first order, um. I think I would actually do a roll call first, but I also need to read the mi- this. Uh, order, uh, from the state of New Hampshire. So, I'm Valerie Shelton and as Chair of the Planning Board this evening, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number Twelve pursuant to Executive Order, twenty-twenty dash oh-four, body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is also a physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting at the New Market Town Hall Auditorium. In accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting in person and by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Zoom for the electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate, um, contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to, I hate that word, contemporaneously, listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through the following website. HTTPS, colon, backslash, Z-O-O-M, period, U-S, backslash, J as in John, backslash, or by phone at one-six-four-six-five-five-eight-eight-six-five-six. And the password is nine-five-five-two-seven-one-eight-one-zero-five. Also to be aired on New Market Channel thirteen for those wishing to watch on their TV, and it is streaming at www dot newmarketnh dot gov backslash channel thirteen. B, we are providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, and we previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the board at www dot newmarket dot gov backslash planning dash board. We are also providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call six-oh-three-six-five-nine-three-six-one-seven, extension one-three-two-one, or email channel thirteen at newmarketnh dot gov. We will also be adjouring the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. And then we will reschedule. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll-call vote. So I'm going to start with the roll-call attendance, and I would like each member to state their presence. Please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which under the right to know law. Again, my name is Valerie Shelton, and I am alone in my office. Eric Boderman? Eric is excused. William Doucette? Mr. Doucette is excused. Jane Ford?
Present and alone.
Jamie Bruton? Jamie, I need you to unmute.
Just got the mute. I, I am present. Um, my son is in the room with me. I don't know if that's a problem.
Nope, just need to know. Yes, Sarah Finch?
Present and alone.
Mikel Zahork?
Present and alone.
Ted Howard?
He's no longer on the board.
Oh, where am I looking here? Going down. My miss, uh, Scott Blackstone?
Present and alone.
Oh, sorry, Ted Sealy?
Yes, uh, present and alone.
Sorry about that. Okay. And, uh, Ted and Mikel, I will appoint you this evening for any voting to, for, uh, Bill and Eric.
And Tony is here. Did you mention?
Sorry, Tony, missed right over you. Uh, you're an alternate, right?
I am, yeah, an alternate. So I won't be voting tonight, but I am present and alone.
Okay, so the board is here, and our town representative is Scott. The hearing. Okay, uh, first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If anyone still, please rise. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, if there are any public comments. Tim, is there anyone from the public at the town hall? If anyone is at the town hall, there's a microphone there. Please come and just state your name if there's any public comments. A hearing none, I'll close the public, or anyone on Zoom? Everyone's here for the application. Um, okay, I'll close the public comments. Review and approval of minutes? The, uh, December eighth meeting minutes? Any members have any comments? Any corrections? Not, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Um, motion by second? Jane, are you seconding that motion?
Yes.
Seconded by Jane Ford. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none? Do a roll-call vote? Jane? Jamie?
Approved.
Sarah?
Approved.
Mikel?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Um, approval of the twelve, uh, December twenty-second, twenty-twenty meeting minutes? Any discussion? Corrections, is there a motion to approve?
I'll approve, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
It's Jane, I'll second it.
Seconded by Jane. Uh, roll-call vote, Jane Ford?
Approved.
Jamie Bruton?
Approved.
Sarah Finch?
I was not present.
Okay. Mc-
Aye.
Ted, Sealy?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Val Shelton, aye. Next order of business is an application, um, by Rob McGinnis of Seacoast Pool Plastering LLC for a design review hearing. On an application, uh, for a property located at four-forty-six and four-fifty Wadley Falls Road in New Market, New Hampshire, text map R-six, lot fifty-seven, and lot fifty-eight, which is in the B-three zone. The proposal is construct a six-thousand-square-foot office warehousing building in designated eighty-thousand-square-foot gravel area for equipment storage. So this is a design review meeting. It provides the applicant the opportunity to come before the board. Um, and it has been noticed publicly to a butters to present their concept to us, and we can talk specifically about the concept, any concerns that the board may have, um, any questions that the applicant has for the board before they actually submit an application for, um, this site plan review. So I will turn it over to the applicant who is here representing the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, my name is John Lorden with Ty and Bond, here today, uh, representing the applicants, Rob McGinnis, and um, who work with Seacoast Pool Plastering. Uh, if I could take a second, I'd like to share my screen so I can pull up a color version. You able to see that?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. So this is, this is the same plan that you have in front of you that we submitted, but it's just a color version to, um, help walk through it a little bit. Um, what we're proposing to do is combine, this is a a combination of two lots. So we're looking to combine the two lots into a single eight-point-four-acre lot. Uh, the addresses of the two lots are four-forty-six and four-fifty Wadley Falls Road. Uh, we are in the B-three zoning district and also the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. Uh, what's proposed is to provide a six-thousand-square-foot building. It's a combination of one-thousand square feet of office and about five-thousand square feet of warehouse. Uh, access into the site is proposed to be off of Wadley, uh, Falls Road. You can see the difference in the pavement, this lighter pavement. This currently exists. There's a driveway that comes in and up over, um, to a culvert crossing. And, uh, what we're doing is, what we're proposing to do is to, uh, extend the pavement into the site, um, through the driveway, provide fourteen parking space, um, the building, and in addition, um, full build-out plan is about eighty-thousand square feet of a gravel parking area. Uh, that's for equipment storage, and we'll get into that description a little bit later. The site in general slopes from west to east, which is top of the page to the bottom of the page. We do have a pocket of wetlands up on this entry, uh, by the driveway. There's also a wetlands, um, as a drainage channel flows down, and like I said, it goes under the driveway actually in two places. Um, and then it comes to some larger wetlands, uh, to the east, including a, uh, a prime wetland. Um, we are not proposing any direct wetland disturbance as part of this project. We do have some minimal, um, wetland buffer disturbance, and that's just for the extension of the driveway, um, access into the site and nowhere else. Uh, we do, as I said, have the Aquifer Protection District. That is this line here. We have a portion of the building in it. Um, but the proposed parking area and the entire gravel parking area is located outside of it, as well as the proposed septic system. For drainage, as, as I said, this is the low end of the site, so it makes sense to have the drainage over here. Uh, it hasn't been designed yet, but we will have treatment, detention, and controlled release. The full build-out of this project would require, uh, an AOT permit from New Hampshire DES. In terms of utilities, we would propose to do electric probably off of this pole to the building. Uh, propane tanks likely for heat. Water would be by a drilled well. And as I said, as I stated before, um, we would have a septic system, uh, to support the offices and bathrooms. The lighting plan has not been prepared yet, but would likely be a combination of wall packs on the building and some whole-mounted lights in the equipment storage area. And of course, they would all be LED dark sky compliant. I don't know if anyone was around, but in two thousand and four, this lot was developed for Prue Oil. Uh, it was going to be their headquarters. There was a lot of traffic. Uh, DOT did require, because there were a lot of trucks coming down Wadley Falls Road, to, um, add a right-turn lane, which impacted these wetlands. We are not expecting that. Uh, we don't have anywhere near that type of traffic. Um, would be very surprised if DOT, um, required that. But, uh, a DOT permit is, is going to be part of it. It's a very low traffic generator. In addition to the driveway permit, we will need the septic system from DES, an AOT permit from DES, plan approval, and as I mentioned, a special use permit from New Market for disturbance within that wetland buffer. So, our goal today was just really to introduce the project, get some feedback, have a conversation, um, show you kind of this is the full planned build-out, and a lot of the conversation we'd like to do and kind of pick the board's brain a little bit, is understand how long an approval is good for. Uh, these gentlemen like to sort of build this in stages as the customers come in, start clearing more land rather than just doing this in, uh, in one whole, one-on-the-time thing. Believe that's everything I wanted to highlight. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Rob McGinnis, and you can talk a little bit about the business, and then we'd be happy to take any questions the board might have after. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, John. Hi, everyone. Uh, pleasure to be here. So, um, basically what we're proposing, what our businesses would be is Seacoast Pool Plastering is a plastering business that does the finished plastering coat on the inside of a swimming pool, um, after it's constructed and before the water is poured into the pool for use. So think about it as when you're standing in a pool and you're touching the bottom or touching the sides, you're touching the the final plaster coat that gets put on before the water gets. So with regards to the warehouse, the office and warehouse, we're proposing is a small office space and then a warehouse just for supplies. Our supplies are very general in, you know, basically wheelbarrows and think about things you would need. The plaster is very similar to cement. So it's basically think about, you know, mixing cement where you have, you know, water and wheelbarrows and the, the bag of cement itself. You've got hoses, you've got hand tools, et cetera. Um, so those are the primary supplies that are needed within the pool plastering business. With regards to the equipment storage business, uh, which is a key part of this project, is that, you know, what we propose here is to offer a, um, area for businesses to store their equipment. Think of it as, you know, trailers, backhoes, um, you know, Conex boxes, things like that. So the way that we think about this business is, think about your neighbors that are in construction and they're parking all of that construction gear in their residential yards, and the neighbors are complaining, and the town's getting complaints that that folks are parking their, um, construction vehicles in the yard as opposed to somewhere else. Uh, we, those are the exact customers we will be going after. Is someone who, you know, they need somewhere to store all of that equipment in the wintertime, um, you know, and need long-term storage. This is not, our view is not here that, you know, these are folks coming in and out, touching their equipment every day. It's more of a storage situation. And so as John mentioned, you know, what's important to us is our view on this is we would want to clear this land as we have demand for it. And so, you know, what we would seek in our approval is that, you know, we would want, we would not want there to be a time, time crunch on, you know, you have three years to clear the land or five years to clear the land. Our goal would be to clear the land as we have demand, and if we don't have demand, then we're not going to clear the land. Um, it's a, you know, it's a kind of a, a clear-as-we-go situation. So that's what we're up to. Um, I actually started having conversations with Diane back in the early summer when we were looking for locations for this business. Um, Diane and I had some great conversations. She pointed me to this Wadley Falls Road area as properly zoned for what we wanted to do. And, uh, you know, we, we reached out to the Prues and convinced them to sell the land to us. Uh, we closed on the purchase of these two lots back in the end of December. So we are the owners of the land, and, um, we're super excited about getting this project and working with you folks. Um, really, the only other thing I'd say is that, you know, John, my partner John who's on the call, he and I are, you know, we're good guys. We're good businessmen, you know, we're not looking to give you guys a hard time. We're not looking to be cute. We're not looking to be difficult. Uh, we're very excited about setting up this business in New Market. Uh, we think we'll be great tenants for the town, and like I said, you know, we're not looking for, to do anything other than by the book, and we're not looking to give you guys a hard time, and in, in response and in return, you know, we're not looking for you guys to hassle us and give us a hard time. Uh, we think this is a, a really great use for the land, and, uh, we're excited about getting it kicked off. So happy to answer any questions that anyone might have, uh, tonight or down the road.
Is there anyone from the public on, I'll open the, just the public hearing, is there anyone on the Zoom call or in the town hall from the public that has any questions for the applicant or comments? I can't see whoever's on the call. Um, so hearing none? I'll close the public comments. Uh, anyone on the board have any questions for the applicant?
Diane, you're muted.
I'm looking for, hold on Diane, anyone, any board members have any comments or questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. Can we, uh, can we get a more zoom-out view of the whole location so we get a sense where it is? Exactly.
Of the whole lot?
Yes.
Those are the, those are the two combined lots.
Okay.
Could, could you put up the actual, um, uh, draft plan that you submitted with the, with the application?
I could. It'll take me few minutes to log in and, and get the black and white version off of my server.
That would be great, John.
Okay.
Uh, Mikel, did you have any other questions?
Uh, I just, you know, visualize myself like exactly where it is, so it'd be helpful to have sort of more zoom-out version of the lot.
Yeah, so this is actually located right before Ash Swamp Road, so going past the gravel pits.
Oh.
If that helps on one-fifty-two?
I can pull up an aerial as soon as I get this other plan done, too.
Okay, uh, while John's doing that, any other board members with any questions or comments? Okay, um, so question for, uh, John or the applicant, um, so when you bring the plan up, the, the concept plan that you had submitted or the design plan, it doesn't show any final grades. I'm assuming from what I'm looking at, um, there's some pretty significant gravel coming out of here. On this plan, it shows, you know, basically, um, like a ten-to-thirty-foot differential in, uh, grades. Is that, can you explain that?
Sure.
As far as what you're proposing to excavate?
It's opening now. So yes, this base file does have, um, some existing grades in the background. And the reason that we don't have, uh, parking in this area is we've done a very rough start of a grading plan. So there's going to be some grade changes in here. This kind of, uh, slope down here, a, a chunk of that'll come out, and then, um, this will slope down into that parking area, but, um, short of having almost a tiered second section up there, um, that'll likely slope down to it. So we have not run calculations. We haven't finalized a grading to find out, um, what's coming out of there, if it is gravel.
Yeah, but what I, what I would say is that other than that area in the top right that John was just pointing to, it's a relatively flat lot other than up in that top corner.
Okay, thank you. And then another question, as far as your, um, the supplies that are stored in the warehouse, do, have you looked at the restrictions in the Aquifer Protection Zone as to materials that cannot be within that zone? And do you know if all of the chemical makeups of your materials comply with that?
Yeah, we believe they do, because there's really no chemicals. I mean, it's really simply, you know, think about it as cement, right, which is really sand and gravel. I mean, there's, there's not, we don't use, you know, a lot of, there's really no chemicals or liquids or things like that that would be stored at this site. It's mostly, you know, think about it as bags of cement and a lot of hand tools.
There's no, there's no hardeners or paints or anything like that?
No.
Right, Diane, did you have any, uh, comments or questions? You need to unmute.
I wanted to point out that there is a member of the public, one of the butters is here in, in, um, in attendance. I didn't know if he um, had any comments, um, the next door, uh, a butter is present. I just wanted you to be aware of that. Um, I do have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask. Um, is this going to require an alteration of terrain permit from DES?
Yes, the full build-out of this scenario would require, uh, AOT permitting.
Okay. Um, secondly, could you point out for us where the wetlands' impact is that you re- the wetland buffer impact that you, um, mentioned in your presentation, John?
Yep, it's just this driveway, so it's access into the site through here. So this line, uh, it might be easier to see on this. So this is the, this is the buffer, so this section of pavement in here.
Okay, so that would require, um, a special exception, I believe.
Special use permit.
Special use permit, forgive me. Um, and I just wanted to, you know, make sure that, um, you know, you were aware of that, that we would need additional documentation on that.
Yes.
Um, and let's see, I have one other-
Diane, I would just say on, on this piece, this light gray piece is already there, that, that was already constructed. So it's really just this dark gray piece adding on to it, but the light gray is existing today, and I think that was part of the approval that Prue got back in the mid-two thousands.
Okay, I just wanted to, uh, point that out. Um, I have another question. You mentioned the, the mixing of materials with respect to, um, uh, the preparation for the, the pool activity. Is that something that will be interior to the site as opposed to outside the site?
Yeah, that wouldn't even, at the site, that, all of that activity happens at the actual location where the pool is. So those, none of that would get mixed at this site.
I see. Okay, very good. Thank you. And, um, I also had a question on the materials. We usually ask for a material list, and that's something that's required under our MS-four permit for EPA, just so that you were, would be aware of that. Um, and I think that was the, you, you did ask about how long is the permit good for, and we can talk a little bit about what we have on the books for vesting. Um, typically, if a project, we, we work with the applicant if, to define what is substantial development and what triggers, uh, protection for you from any changes in zoning going forward. And we work with you to identify infrastructure improvements that would be, um, done within that twenty-four-month period to get you to that point. Um, I don't know if, uh, DES has phasing requirements for their approvals, um, but I wanted you to be aware that they may have some as well, but, uh, we can, we can talk about the phasing plan if you so desire. And one other last point I wanted to make is part of why this area has worked so well is because there is a, a buffer requirement, um, and it has to be maintained, a seventy-five-foot, setback requirement off of, um, Wadley Falls Road, one-fifty-two. And if you look at the, the uses that are there now, they're, for the most part, they're screened from the road. And that's been a very effective way of, you know, with, by keeping the buffers in place, and I hope as we go forward and you consider your landscaping plan, that, um, there is consideration given to maintaining these. that there is consideration given to maintaining the existing vegetation that's there so that it can be, a, a buffer can be provided from.
Yeah, what I, what I would say that Diane is that one, that's one of the reasons why John and I really like this piece of land is because, for that very reason. So there's a lot of privacy, fencing and things like that. So we, we very much were attracted to the location because of that.
Good, okay, I just wanted to reinforce that idea. Thank you very much for answering my questions.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to reopen the public hearing. Who is the member of the public that's here?
It's Taylor Brenner?
Yeah. Do you have any, Taylor, any questions for the applicant?
Um, yeah, I just, I just joined recently to the meeting. Where is the signage on the, on the plan? Out front, along the road?
It, it's, that has not been, that location has not been determined yet.
Okay.
Just for your knowledge, this is considered design review. So it gives the applicant the ability to ask questions, see what the board, when the, when they come in with a full site plan application, all the abutters get re-notified. And then at that point, they would have complete plans for the, what they're proposing, detailed planning, signage, grading.
Yeah. Um, you know, I, I think I've been there for, I don't know, three years, three and a half years. And that site easement is so important to be maintained. Since eight and a half acre parcel next to me has been vacant, I've had to maintain in front of that as well. The state doesn't do anything just so that we can pull out of the driveway safely. So, you know, I would just want to tell the, the new owner that that's, they're definitely going to need to maintain that for both of our safety.
Yep, thank Mr. Brenner for that. When we work with New Hampshire DOT, they're going to require us to show sightlines for both directions for the driveway permit. And in that, I'm suspect.
I, I think your, your, your property is a lot, a lot safer to take a left and take a right out of. But I, I rely on your site easement just as much as, as, as I do mine. So but I'm excited for, you know, to eventually have a neighbor, that's for sure.
Okay. Are, are, any, anything further, Taylor?
No.
Right, and I will reclose the public hearing. Any other comments from the board at this point? Or does the applicant have any questions for the board?
No, maybe if, it would be helpful for John and I, if you guys could maybe give us just a sense thing and process from here. Obviously, you know, we need to get our final documents together and plans and submitted to you. But once, once we do that, can you guys just give us a sense of the, the step procedures from there?
Diane, can, you can work with Diane on timing as far as the completeness of the application. Diane will determine whether or not the applicant is, application is complete. She'll make a recommendation to the board to accept it. Unlike other planning boards, we may actually hear the application the same night as accepted as opposed to delaying it to the next meeting. So you'll typically be heard that night as long as the application is complete in the town plan and we'll review that with you. And then from there, it will depend whether or not the planning board wants to have a, a technical review committee established. The town engineer will, will review the plan and submit comments as well. So we can't really give you an actual timing as to, you know, being before the board and when you would anticipate an approval. Much of it's going to be depending on what you submit in your application as far as how complete it is and how consistent it is with the zoning, with the regulations, you know, site plan and zoning. And if you're looking for any waivers, I mean, you'll want to get those before the board fairly early on. You know, there's no specific process. I mean, the process is review of the application, potentially have a site walk, but with the board. And then get before a TRC. And then town engineering review and Diane can go over all that with you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
We will, we endeavor to do our best to facilitate applications before this board.
Great, great, thank you, very helpful.
I have a question for you guys. I, there's anyone opposed for me to move my equipment in there right now? Because I've been waiting this long for this meeting to ask special permission to move all of my equipment into the property.
That would be a question you need to address to Diane and the code enforcement officer. So that's not a planning board decision. Diane, you can take that offline. You know, you could deal directly with Diane and Mike Hoffman on that. It's not a planning board.
Okay. Thank you. One last question, would, would the board or the town be looking for a phasing plan? Like a detailed plan showing how we're looking to build this out? Or is it just you know, something that we could either do in, in just written text or discussion?
I think you, we would be looking at what you are proposing and then getting the input from our engineer and our town planner as to you know, how that would be consistent with our regulations.
Okay.
And I think it would be helpful to have a visual of the phasing and that that might be tied into our whole discussion of vesting going forward. And will be outlined in the developer's agreement. So, you know, we're willing to work with you on that. So be prepared to present something to the TRC when we get to that point and we can review it at that juncture and make modifications as necessary.
And I think it might be helpful to know that a lot of what we'll be looking at is stormwater management. You know, and, and sorry, stabilization of the site.
And even though the building in some of the, the site is out of the aquifer protection area, we're still governed by MS four. And there's still a threshold in our stormwater regulations for various requirements for best management practices. And so I just, I don't want you to be of the impression that we're not going to look at those things, but that most definitely is going to be part of your AOT app as well. And you probably know that because you've worked on these before, thanks.
Well, especially have to be conscientious if you're storing equipment. Obviously, the equipment's particularly construction equipment is going to have gas, oil, diesel, you know, when you're right adjacent to the aquifer zone. So that's going to be looked at pretty, pretty, you know, specifically.
Understood.
And, and other sites in that vicinity, we have required some kind of a containment area for any runoff that might have potential contaminants that might affect, even though it's not directly in the aquifer, it's still close enough that it's something that would be of concern.
Okay, I think we're all set at this point on this application. Everyone's got their questions answered at this point. Okay, well, we look, we definitely look forward to seeing an application before us. Well, you know, want to welcome you to town and obviously want to work together to make sure that you're successful as well as our duties to protect the interests of the town. So we'll look forward to seeing you before us again soon.
Great, well, thank you guys, really appreciate the time and the feedback and we'll be back in short order. But we're excited and we appreciate all the, all the great feedback, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rob, thank you, John and
Yep, thank you all.
and your team.
Okay, bye.
This is old or new business, any old business before the board? Diane?
Um, just that I did forward to the town council, Tony and Scott, a letter following up on our recommendations for the rescinding of water and sewer impact fees and replacing them with water and sewer system development charges. And I just wanted to make sure that you received that, Tony, and that that's being considered or will be on your agenda shortly. I think the board is anxious to see some activity on that, so. And that's all I have right now, thank you.
Okay. Um, any new business before us? What does anyone want to jump in? I have nothing from the chair's report, any committee reports. Tony, sorry, Scott, anything happening at the council level that we should be aware of?
I don't think so.
Any, any committees or commissions meeting that anyone wants to report on? Quiet out there. We're all hibernating. So if there's no further business before us, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Not, not really new business, but I realized that for the December twenty-second meeting minutes, I should have abstained from that vote because I was not at that meeting.
Okay, Diane, you'll make that correction. Oh, I do want to, in case people aren't aware, we have Jamie and Sarah, your terms are expiring this year. And I think there's just a couple more days to re-up. So I hope that you do that.
I am willing, I don't know if I can do it from long distance, I'm not in town. And I'm not going to physically be back in town until the end of April.
Yeah. I'm not sure we're going to be meeting in person before then. So, and it's a three-year term, so don't worry about that. But anyway, just wanted to make sure in case, you know, you kind of, you know, weren't tracking that, those I think it's till the twenty-ninth as far as, you know, talking to Terry about signing up for the ballot. And I'm sure, I'm assuming you don't have to be in person to do that, do you, Tony? Do you know? Under the COVID guidelines?
The signing up, I'm not sure if you have to be in person or not. So you would want to be Littlefield in the, in the clerk's office?
I'll give her a call tomorrow and see what the possibilities are.
Okay, perfect. Um, yes, so now we had a mo, we were, I'm sorry, Tony?
Yeah, if I, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. I just wanted to mention that our deliberative session this year is, is a little different. We're doing it all online and, and, and it's just a different process. So it's not your typical town meeting process. And the first, we're doing two virtual sessions. The first one is tomorrow. And the school portion starts at six o'clock, the town portion starts at seven o'clock. And it's really just a, at that point, we're just really reading the warrant. And then the public will have an opportunity to comment over the course of the week. And there's various ways you can comment, you can comment via email. You can, I think there's going to be a designated spot where you can leave written comment. You can call in, so there's going to be options for people to be involved. And then there's going to be a second meeting next week, I believe it's the second, February second. That'll be the second half of the deliberative session. And that's how we're doing it this year. So it's and it's all because of COVID. This will be the, you know, it's a one-time-only type of event. So hopefully people can tune in.
Thank you. Okay, I'm still looking for that motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, Scott, is there a second? Jane has a second, okay. Everyone have a, we'll see you next month. Have a great rest of the week and stay healthy.